Seven o'clock.
Yep, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on the budget and we will call the meeting to order if you could join me in standing before the meetings.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie Arnold. And we have a quorum. Here will be joining us tonight. Item C, adoption of the agenda. So we did get an additional list of bills from Jackie this afternoon. Are there any other changes?
I don't have any.
Board members seeing the changes? And I'll entertain a motion to adopt that when you're ready.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda with the additional list of bills.
Second.
Motion in second to adopt the agenda with the additional list of bills. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item D, public input on non-agenda items. Anyone signed up to speak or would like to provide input to that? Do I know whether they're on agenda or reserved time for agenda items? Okay. Move on to item E, approval of minutes of past meetings.
As you'll note, the March 14th ones are in there as well as I did add just a brief summary of, since we did do an approval of an agenda and such on the April 7th session.
Comments or changes to the minutes? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion in second to approve the minutes of past meetings as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item F, approval of financial items. Jackie.
Cumulative three-year comparison of your general fund is listed on page, for some reason read that 13 it looks like. Included in the salaries for March on the left side. Want you to note that is a little bit higher this month and that's because the governor's retention bonus was included in that, which is was around an additional $70, $71,000, including payouts as well as FICA. It was not IFRS eligible, bonuses are not, so that was not included in that. As you can see, cash has dipped just a little bit down just because of timing of bills. We've gone from 1.1 million down to 894,000 over a previous year, so we'll continue to monitor that. On the next page, special revenue funds. I don't really have anything specific to report. The only thing to report that I would would be here under physical plant and equipment levy. We did have our new bus purchase. And so that is included in that. So that is, I think, in rotation now and we're still awaiting DOT paperwork, but otherwise it is in rotation and covered under insurance. The next page, activity and proprietary funds, activity fund, hot lunch funds, student construction, FFA farm, and our split. I don't have anything specific to report on that. I know Mr. George may have a basketball financial report or an activity report that he'll report on for you after a little while. And then summary list of bills. I did have two that were voided and reissued simply because apparently my fingers are fat. So on page 18, Jack Schroeder is not getting a reimbursement for to Seoul Conference. That's actually to Jody Schrick and so it's been avoided and recut. And then on page 22, Northwest Iowa Community College, it was a miscommunication between me and the field trip people. It should be to Northwestern. So that has been avoided and reissued to be appropriate. And those are both on your additional list of bills. Other than that, school business official report. Next month I am going to request, depending on what date we decide the board meeting will be, I'm going to request an amendment of our current year budget, simply because of the governor retention bonuses and our state co-curricular successes. Our expenditures are up significantly from what I planned, so I want to make sure that we amend our budget so that we don't get written up in our audit this year. There's also been a few increases in the House project that I didn't realize would be all in this year as well as some supply chain issues that are causing some increases. So just kind of give you that heads up. That will need to be in the paper just like our other budget 10 to 20 days ahead of time. So we'll just get a plan of that accordingly with what we decide on our next board meeting.
Anybody have any questions or comments on any of that? I'll entertain a motion to approve when you're ready, including the additional list of bills.
Make a motion to approve the financial items, including the additional list of bills.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the list of financial items, including the list of additional bills. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Item G, administrative reports, discussion items. Mr. George.
So at your table I gave you some student recognition items. And staff as well as community recognition. So just kind of want to run through these. First listed is congratulations to Lillian Downard. She was, she placed in the top 12 at the, it was the online Midwest Space Settlement Design Competition. We were hoping to go back down to Houston, but again NASA had it online and during that process here last month, she was recognized as top 12. So we got a fingers crossed that she'll actually physically get to go to the Kennedy Space Center in Florida this summer. If not, she'll compete virtually as well. So hats off to her and Mr. Allen for his support during that competition. Mrs. Christensen's here, but she'll probably tell a little bit more about the FCC LA students that qualified for the national competition. They competed here, the state competition, so Alexis Austin, Anna Kube and Aubrey Metzger and Sports Nutrition, and then Ashlyn Murray and Georgie Odekovin and National Programs in Action, which, can you explain to us what that entailed?
Yeah, did you have to wait till or do you want to check it out?
If it's part of your presentation, then we, we'll just wait to hear from you.
Okay, that's fine.
The next bullet point there, we had seven. Excuse me, six teams that competed in the book bash. Six middle school teams and one high school team. So a total of seven teams and all the kids that participated are listed there. So our six teams were six of the 27 middle school teams and our one high school team was one of seven that competed last week down in Sioux City. And you can see we had a second place team, third place team, fourth and fifth place team, in addition to the 10th and 12th place team in the middle school division, and then the high school got fifth. So what that entails is each team has 10 books to read. And so at Sioux City, there's two rounds of tests. So middle school students take a 10-question quiz with their other team members and then they take a break and then they take another 100-question test. And so those teams, based upon their scores, ranked that high. High school, there's 125 questions, two times of 250 total questions. Each team got to kind of choose how they wanted to divide up those 10 books. So some teams, everybody read all 10, some teams, each person read two or three. They really got to kind of choose how they wanted to tackle that. So again, thanks to Malia Towne and Joe Crone for getting that kicked off this year. They wanted to do it last year, but because of COVID it wasn't able to be held. Looking forward to that continuing into the future. So hats off to those kids. And then also wanted to recognize the fourth grade kindness squad. They raised a little over $4,000 for the Ukrainian refugees. Sue Van Wyk was in substitute teaching and kind of had talked to the kids about this and really inspired them to do this a couple of weeks ago. So they raised four, over $4,000. I've already donated those funds. And then Mrs. Groen wanted us to recognize Premier Bank and Frontier Bank for facilitating the counting of that because a lot of it came in as coins on the day of. And then staff members contributed if they wanted to wear jeans that day. I think they threw in five bucks apiece. So that got us to the 4,000, 135. And then Dr. Hofer in Line County Chiropractic treated the fourth grade kindness squad donuts last week because of the fundraiser and all the other community outreach. So we want to recognize them again. Both coaches, Grayfeen and Gurman, wanted to specifically recognize Dan Cruz for all of his support during the state basketball tournaments, but also his work throughout the course of the season. So wanted to recognize Dan and his expertise. And then on the back of that page, we want to thank Amy Borman. Amy and Nurse Brenda Van Huffwagen did the CPR training for all seniors while the third through 11th graders took the ISAS tests a couple of weeks ago. So as you might recall, it's now a graduation requirement to be trained in CPR and we've been doing that for just over a decade. Hard to believe it's that, been that long. Coach Grayfeen and Coach Gurman also would like to thank the community for their support throughout the winter and making the multiple trips back and forth to Des Moines. Those were the two other sheets of paper I included were the summary of all the awards that the individuals won or were bestowed upon them by all the different publications. So you kind of got that. And then Mr. Gurman also gave you some school records that the Zach Lett, Murray, Mason Gurman, and Rex Van Wyk set during the course of the season too. So hats off to them. And then lastly, I want to specifically recognize the Booster Club for their generous support of all of our student athletes in the programs. I've got a report here like Jackie alluded to that will break down our expenses and donations, but the Booster Club specifically gave $6,280 to the basketball teams to offset all of our meal costs while they're in Des Moines for two weeks. So we appreciate that. Roughly $20 per student athlete per day in Des Moines. And then the district chips in an additional $15 per student athlete per day. So sometimes what we try to, what we try to tell the coaches is if we can all go to the same restaurant for breakfast or dinner, let's do that. But as we know, when you're in Wells Fargo, it's concession stand food or nothing. So there's sometimes where they just kind of get in their own way. So the Booster Club makes that happen. The second bullet point there, last week they had their spring meeting and coaches from all of our programs made their requests and the Booster Club approved more than $19,000. So I didn't list everything there, but almost every program, you know, put something in about team camps or individual camp scholarships. So a big chunk from each program is in there, but it also includes some equipment and supplies that kind of go above and beyond the normal thing. So I highlighted the, a new football sled for the high school here. That'll allow us to take the sled we have here, take it to George. So that helps both programs. Another set of catcher's gear and a couple more baseball and softball bats for the, for those programs, and then a host of supplies for the weight room. So like I said, between those two things here in just the last six weeks, $25,000 allocated to our activities, which is outstanding and we really appreciate. And so whether you're a community member, a parent that might have volunteered in our concession stand, we really appreciate that. Or you maybe bought a piece of apparel over the course of the entire year, all those funds go to the Booster Club and then obviously given right back to the kids and the coaches and those programs. And then the last bullet point, you can see our Booster Club members, Stacy Even is the current president, but it also includes Justin Christensen, Stacy Darren, Jessica Cruz, Shannon Munson, Kim Murphy, Beth Vander Zee, and Kay Whittier. So we appreciate them meeting every month and supporting our program. A lot of recognitions this time.
So, do you need to drink water? Okay, move on to item two, communications. We have some information on some urban renewal areas.
Yeah, so I've got three summaries of the three urban renewal areas. If you want a, the full packet with the full urban renewal plan, I'm happy to get that to you. But you can see the maps and kind of the finances in relation to these three urban areas. What the city is doing tonight is taking action to designate those three as TIF zones. So that would freeze their valuations for 10 years. And so the school will continue to receive funding for PEPAL, this instructional support levy. And if we were to ever have any debt service, we would continue to generate funds. But the TIF really freezes those at pre-construction levels. So any evaluations, any of those funds that we would get after 10 years is used to pay for the infrastructure, whether it's streets and utilities and such like that. So like I said, between the three, it's a little over $25 million in their total valuation. The hope here is obviously more houses, more families, more students, and more students is the real primary driver for our funding. So hopefully in the next 10 years, we get all those lots developed and our population and enrollment increases.
Any questions on those? Okay, moving on to item three, student and staff presentation. Jill Christensen, family and consumer sciences, and FCC LA.
Surely no good place to put this. Let's go over here. I might not stand there.
You bet.
Okay. Ask him over here. And avoid the sun too. Yes, thank you for welcoming me. My name is Jill Christensen. This is my fifth year here as a family consumer sciences teacher at Central Lion. And this year, new to my program is family, is FCC LA, which is Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. To kick off the year with starting with FCC LA, I made a brochure that I handed out to all the parents when they came for our open house at the end of the year, just letting kids know what opportunities they have in FCS and that FCC LA was going to be coming to our district as something new. So it's just a real quick, simple brochure with some information just to spark interest and get kids talking about FCC LA, since it is something that has to be added. Current tech, we were all required to add a CTSO, which is a student organization by the year 2024, 2025. So we had one with FFA. I will add FCC LA and the two other CTE teachers will need to add their student organization in the next couple of years. So it was decided that I would be the first to take the lead in starting this as, and so we could add these a little bit stair stepped sequentially as opposed to all at once. And this was the year that, yeah, COVID put a hold on things. So it started out great. Right away, you know, in the fall, it started with kids just getting interested, talking about it. In October, there was a leadership rally in Ankeny, Iowa, in which I took two students down to that. Corinne Christensen and Chloe Metzger went with me just to get exposure on what FCC LA is, opportunities, meet kids across the state that are involved in this program. The girls generated a ton of enthusiasm on this trip. On their way back, they actually created our Instagram page. So FCC LA CL is our Instagram page. They started contacting kids and sending snaps to get the word out this was coming. And then we had our district meeting, which was at the Grand Falls Casino and Resort. And we took 27 kids to that event for the day. And it was an awesome day in which the casino opened up their doors and had all of the department heads tell their story and let us see what they do. We had the opportunity to see front of house as well as back of house. Back of house is inside the restaurant part, in the gaming room where you are trained on how to deal, the warehouse where all supplies come in, the back of the salon and spa, and learning that this is a lot more than just what you see on the gaming floor that goes into this. So it was a really neat day from those kids. Also at that event at the district meeting, my daughter Corinne ran for district office and was elected to be a district officer for our Northwest Iowa district. And after that, we had 15 kids that committed, that they decided they wanted to join FCC LA. We had another couple that joined later, so I ended up with a total of 17 members for our first year. So that was quite impressive, I thought. During the year, some things that happened is kids started learning about what projects they wanted to compete in. We also had FCC LA week in which Monday they did make members count. We had a party at one of the, at Metzger's home. We made signs to put on lockers, played some games, had some food. It was really a fun night for the kids. Tuesday was make service count and we had a booth at one of the basketball games and we collected donations for Atlas. And so we were able to take food and clothing items to Atlas. Wednesday was make educators count. So we had little 100 grand candy bars with notes for all of our faculty in the high school saying, you're worth 100 grand. Thursday of that week, it was make skills count and Corinne and Chloe made t-shirts that said FCC LA, Central Lion. We also made all, had all of our locker signs that went up that time, at that time for the kids. And they really worked on getting the word out with FCC LA, that they had an article or two in the Northwest Iowa Review as well as our local Lion County reporter. So we did a lot with those things. And then it got time to get ready for our state convention and all the projects. I ended up taking 13 students to compete and of that, five of them advanced to the national competition. So it was a huge accomplishment. Of those students that competed, I had one freshman girl that worked on our own project, that was Jade Cruz. She did career exploration and so she had to research a career of her choice and then do a presentation on it. I had another group of Level Two Sports Nutrition, Ella Jagger, Ashlyn Davis, and Sophia Peterson. And the sports nutrition category is, I had three groups of sports nutrition. And they had to have either another student athlete that they actually knew or they could create a hypothetical person. And at the Level Two, they had to create a diet plan for this other person. It could not be anyone in their group. So they would have to identify their age, their weight, their activity level, what, whether they wanted to gain, maintain, or lose weight, and create a diet plan to meet their needs for a regular day of activity, a pre-competition day, and a day of a competition. This person also had to have one dietary special need of some sort that was unique to them. We had to look up recommended daily allowances. We had to use online tracking systems to track calories and then determine nutrients if we were meeting all of the needs of these athletes. So Ella, Ashlyn, and Sophia worked on a 14-year-old boy who wanted to gain weight for football on an active schedule. My other group was AK and Afton and they did a unique five-day diet plan because they were at Level Three for a Danish foreign exchange student who played handball and was struggling with finding dietary needs that tasted good to him as a foreign exchange student. So comparing Danish foods to our diet in the United States. And then my last group in sports nutrition was Alexis Austin, Anna Kube, and Aubrey Metzger. And they looked at the diet plan of a very active 15-year-old who had a gluten intolerance. And they actually used one of their classmates for their person and prepared the foods and made food for her and then reported back how she felt on their diet plan. It was a lot of in-depth information for them looking at how many calories per gram of all of our macronutrients and learning, you know, with someone who needs so many calories because they're so active, and doing that without carbs because you can't have gluten. So that was really fun to see how much they had to stretch, what they were doing. And those girls scored very well. That they, like I said, they earned gold and were the top gold. Since only the top two golds get to go on to Nationals. Another group that I had, Corinne and Chloe were promote and publicize FCC LA in which they, this is their poster, this is their binder, this is the stuff that they made. And they really took the chapter from two and got the word out and made people excited about FCC LA. So that was fun. And then my last group was Ashlyn Murray and Georgie Odekovin with the National Programs in Action. And in that, it's broken down into three subcategories. And theirs was community service, in which they did fundraising to help offset costs for students that want to be in competitive dance. They ran four fundraisers and generated about $4,000 for their dance team, for students in need. Their action plan was phenomenal, the follow-through, and even their reflection on what they would do to build on this program. So of the students that qualified for Nationals, Nationals is in San Diego, California. It begins on June 27th and runs through July 3rd. So I've been meeting tomorrow night with parents that are interested in sending their children onto Nationals. So it's a neat experience. FCC LA is all about promoting personal growth and leadership development. There are so many categories in which kids can compete. So I really tried to them to hone in on what are you passionate about? And then we will find the category and the criteria in which you can gain recognition for your efforts. So it's been pretty cool. With the CTSOs, they really want us to focus then onto our pathways. So human service, education, and training, as well as hospitality, tourism, visual arts and design, and real-world skills. So things that they can take away from this. So things that they can take away from this. Do you have more questions about F C C L A? I'm incredibly proud of the effort that these kids gave on a very short time schedule. The state basketball, we really didn't think much about F C C L A.
When did they start on their projects? Like, how long did, like, Anna have to do that? Was that a while ago, or that was kind of recent?
We still have some protein.
Yes. Yeah. That's it. I had a day where we worked with West Lion's chapter and got together with their students to see their projects, and for the kids to begin looking at their planning process. That all of them are either required to have an electronic or a paper portfolio in which they present to the judges. Unfortunately, this year, since it is a national organization and COVID is still a thing, no spectators were allowed to watch their presentations. So I stood out in the lobby waiting for them. I was fortunate that I did have one parent chaperone, Nicole Cruz, so I want to thank her for going along. Because at our state convention, we left on a Sunday at noon and we returned on Tuesday, I don't know, around six.
Do they have to be in one of your classes in order to begin F C C L A?
That is a requirement. And F C C L A actually begins in the middle school, and eighth graders are required to take F C S. So every kid that has gone through middle school, F C S would be eligible. It does help if they are in other classes with me, so that they can see the correlation between what is taught in my classroom and the real world.
So you don't have to be in it simultaneously?
Sure.
As long as, you know, you're interested and you want to participate. Jill's put a lot of work into this. Chloe and Corinne have done a great job of recruiting their peers. And I think the success that you just had at the state convention is only going to, you know, increase your numbers for next year. So hats off to you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it was really cool. That's it. The kids nominated me for an award on the National F C C L A, too. And so that was really bizarre to be recognized nationally as an advisor.
And your first year?
Yes.
It's an impressive start, both of you.
That is, yeah.
Where you made it the first year.
Yeah.
Very nice.
It's easy when you work with good kids.
So at the National Convention, do they have to raise their own funds to go? Is that what they?
I haven't been told anything on funding for it. Right now, I've been, for the state convention, everything was covered by the school. Jackie was awesome, got me my own credit card, worked great. So, yes. Got that credit card on? Yeah. But, yeah, for the National Convention.
Paid for it right then, but she got it.
I thought it was fine. No, that's it. For the National Convention, right now, I did apply for a Lion grant for the kids, and we don't have any money. So, but I was estimating around 2,000 to 2,500 per student to attend. Right now, plane tickets have gone up, that as of last week, I could have secured a ticket for around 680. Last I checked, they were up to 800. Rooms in San Diego, there are 14 hotels that National F C C L A has contracts with, and if you do not use one of their hotels, there's a surcharge, so you're locked into those hotels. They do not include continental breakfast. And so I just did a rough breakdown of prices that I was able to obtain from West Lion.
Have they gone, they've taken them to?
Yeah, she goes to National Convention. So that has been, Kristin has been a huge asset for me and mentor as I go through this. So when we looked at it, we were thinking 2,000 to 2,500 per student. When I broke it down with my own cost, I was thinking 80 to 90 dollars a night, if I could have four kids in a room each night, and 50 dollars a day for food, which is a pretty frugal budget in San Diego and no touristy things, and I came up at 1,950. We had to have to, plane flights are to leave like June 26th. So it's a big, right now on the commitment, I have two that are still on the fence if they want to go or not. I have three that, yeah, this, they weren't anticipating this for their summer plan. We also have some of the students that are involved with the band trip, so going to Florida and then a few weeks later to go to California. This is a lot.
And a couple of those probably also play softball, too, so.
Yeah, and we have softball in there and summer activities, family vacations, so it's very much in the air, so I don't even know what we have entailed. It is unique that the National F C C L A Conference rotates every year, so next year it will be in Denver. And so if we wanted to plan ahead more, that's it. I knew they had great projects, but yeah, and I knew that Nationals was coming, but I wasn't really.
Thinking of the cost probably.
It's tough in your first year.
Oh, yeah, that's it. I mean, it was like.
Get the program off the ground.
Yeah, I was like, I was hoping to take five kids.
Yeah.
That was.
So back to your funding question, you know, whatever students are able to fundraise based upon how many of our kids decide that they want to go, great. But the district's going to make sure that anybody that wants to go, we're going to, we'll cover the costs, whether it's through, you know, funding through the Lyon County Riverboat funds that we have on an annual basis. We've got some special project dollars that we can utilize to make sure everybody that wants to go gets to go. But like, much like right now, we got kids now at the state FFA convention. That's why they sell fruit, that's why they do the donut fundraisers, that's why they do things throughout the entire year, so that when they have these trips.
Right. Then I know West Lion does do some of that.
Yes, it's nothing out of their pocket.
Obviously, our first year is hard to them.
Thanks, Jill.
Thanks, Jill.
Great work.
Yeah, good job.
Okay. Well, I don't remember four principal reports. Mr. Allen, great. We have two parts. The first part is just a summary of what occurred with our current teacher conferences that we had on March 14 and 17. The elementary side, just give you a sheet of what we've looked at. Very high attendance. We really push our conferences at the lower level, and so we had a 94% attendance per grade average. You can see the individual scores there per section, whereas it's just one parent or two parents per section. And what we try and strive to do as a staff, if someone is unable to make it, we do follow up with them, we give them all the materials that they would have got at conferences and have a new conversation on how things are going. This third quarter conference here, we really hammer the fast and then show the progression over the first two sessions. So we have 15 minutes, but as the ladies will attest, it's a pretty short time. I mean, there's a lot of things you could talk about. So if those parents do need a little more time, we try to figure out ways to get creative, where we give them two slots, or if there's time, if we have to go back, then we go find those. So a very high attendance rate, we're very happy for parents to sign up and show up and continue to attend those. Mr. Engelmann gave you just some information from his. The seventh and eighth grade attendance rate was 92%, so again, a very high mark. In the high school, though, he said, "The percentage is unknown, but the attendance just seems to decline over the years and over from fall to spring. If the scores maintain high, it's hard to get those parents to come back in, especially during, you know, we had basketball and all these other events, another night for that." But, you know, again, he tries to encourage that same communication, go out if they need to contact the parent, for kids that are struggling, to make sure that they find a way to be successful in that third quarter. So any questions on the conferences? Then my second piece tonight, we have been scrambling to try and finish our timeline set, so we can give a preliminary look at next year. That's always important, I mentioned, to see what is coming in as to our numbers. So I gave you two different things. I gave you preliminary numbers as our sign up as of today, and then also a kind of a three-year trend line, just to house comparison, or the comparison has occurred in the last couple of years. As you noticed, the preschool numbers, very similar to have been in the past. Just an example, last year, we had a, at this time, we had signed up 46 kids, but we ended up with 53 to start the school year. So we are working through, trying to find or make sure that all the families are notified of those dates. Of course, we take registration all the way from now until August, but we try and get those numbers as fast as we can, contact our daycares, and anywhere those kids might be, so that we can kind of have an idea of what the numbers are looking like. And I give you a gender breakdown, which that's usually, you know, fairly common, it's almost 50/50 all the way through. The transitional kindergarten is kind of an anomaly number. Again, it's kind of right in line, but then you go over to that gender side, and you're like, that's kind of interesting. So two things for transitional kindergarten that we look at. Number one is birth date. In the current year, anything after March 15, we really start seeing a large developmental gap between the maturity level of a person after March 15 compared to prior to that. And that also adds up to about a 14-month difference between the oldest and the youngest if we have students after March 15 coming into the next level. So, but not only there are lots of boys, very few girls, so we'll make sure those two girls are in the same section, so that they have someone to work with. And then you'll see that we do have a big jump in our kindergarten next year. Right now, we currently have 58 students signed up for our kindergarten, which is also a great number. You can see the prayers in the last couple of grades. Couple contributing factors there, we know we've had some daycare occurrences here in the last couple of weeks, that we have a couple of parents that have commented they might have looked at TK, but they're looking at a kindergarten option for five days a week. That's always a question we have for some of them. But we've also had, you know, some larger numbers. We had a very large preschool two years ago, so that kind of plays into that as well. So, yeah, very strong numbers there, but I wanted to give a, you know, preliminary number of how we can do, and we will update that in May if we have any changes, so.
Just so you know, right now, our TK has 33 kids in it, so that's another contributing factor as to the larger kindergarten. So when Steve did his kind of unofficial count and registration last year, we were planning on 22, but we ended up with, at this point now, we're up to 33.
Right. And so they got to go somewhere, you know? Any questions on that information? All right?
52.
Thank you.
52 preschoolers, too. So we currently have two TK teachers. Correct. That's the anticipation of it in the next year also.
Yeah. When we look at the preschool numbers, there's still some that are not signed up. So the recommendations from the preschool teachers, I do recommend TK or preschool for some of the families, so if they go with the recommendation, we should, 23 to 24, what we're looking at, what we figured?
In TK?
In TK. Now, that's what we're doing now for the new year, is making sure we check and double check those lists of who we have, that we know of, and see what's worth it, and make sure it's coming for.
So by Friday, last Friday here in April, we actually have no preschool, no TK, no kindergarten, and it's like a step-up date. So parents have individual times with, if you're a preschooler now, you've got an individual time with a TK teacher. If you're a TK student right now, you've got an individual time with a kindergarten. So they can kind of have like a conference. We call it a visit day, but it's, they're all individual times, correct?
No, it's, it's your call for two hours.
Okay.
We just signed up.
The kids come in, parents can also come in if they'd like to, you know, but right now, what started this week is our teachers are actually going into the preschool to kind of see the kids and see how they interact. And then on the 29th, when we have the kids move up, they have a chance to see those different classrooms. Parents also have a chance to talk to the teachers, too. So it's, yeah. So that's April 29th.
And then we'll, like Steve said, continue to try to identify preschoolers or new families that move in throughout the rest of the spring and summer. There's always a family or two that show up on the first day of school that we weren't planning on, sorry. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Move on to item five, Superintendent Report.
So I gave you another paperclip piece of information in addition to the report that Curtis had prepared. He was going to be here, but then we were short two additional workers today, so Dan Cruz recruited Curtis to be a picker at the finish line for the track meet. So I'm going to just kind of review what's in the budget. Curtis is more than happy to come in May, answer any questions. If you guys got any follow-ups after what I presented here, what you've got in the packet, just let me know. The total kind of estimated technology purchases for next school year is $131,611. So if you're following the, kind of the line items, PC computers, whether it's student machines or teacher machines, is about $50,000, 60 of them, 70 additional Chromebooks, and then the PCs again are listed there, I guess, for teacher machines. In addition to, we always purchase, with our categorical funds, additional 15 computers for special ed department, whether it's student use or it's teacher use. And then pre-K, we always try to purchase six iPads as well. The middle section is really the software component to the technology purchases. As you can see, we're really on a three-year rotation, and so the case imaging software is an annual. Canvas is annual, and the Microsoft renewal is annual. But at the bottom there is the content filtering that's up for renewal this year, but we won't have to pay that for two additional years. So those totals are what come to 131. And you can see there, at the bottom, is kind of the rotation that Curtis has planned for where those new machines will go. Chromebooks to sixth graders, PCs for freshmen. The only thing that I would add is, last month, we talked about, we've E-rated a project that's going to be about $60,000 in total, but through E-rate, 60% goes to E-rate. Another about $24,000 will be in one-time funding to run additional cabling and update our wireless access points in the entire building. It's been about 10 years since we've updated that, so the technology has really surpassed its life, and Curtis was, got multiple quotes, and the $60,000 quote Jackie submitted through E-rate and was approved, so.
We sent off the purchase order and will be built after July 1st. We are committed to the $60,000 if E-rate would fall through YI. They do make a sign that, you know, they don't want to get stuck with it. So if something would happen with E-rate, it shouldn't, but it's always on that, in the back of our minds, so.
And so the access points have been ordered, again, much like everything else. They said, "Don't expect them before Thanksgiving." So the plan is, all the wiring will be done this summer, and then once we actually get the access points, Curtis and Jeff will install either over those, over the Christmas holiday, or just one at a time during the course of the day, or on nights or weekends when it's not disruptive to the learning environment.
What's the timeframe for the purchase of the new laptops and Chromebooks?
He'll start ordering here in the spring for an August arrival or before. We always do that in the spring as fast as possible with a July 1 post-billing date.
Good. So nothing physically been ordered yet?
Okay. I'd like to have some discussion with Curtis about specifically the seventh and eighth grades. Looks like in 2020, we changed from laptops to Chromebooks for the seventh and eighth grade. I've had some feedback on that, that I'd just like to kind of hear the pros and cons of each, and just talk about that a little bit more with him, unless you're prepared to answer that tonight?
No, I think that's, you know, like I said, whether it's May, or do you guys individually want to reach out to him?
I would say as soon as you can reach out to him.
No, I think that's, you know, like I said, whether it's May or do you guys individually want to reach out to him?
I would say as soon as you can reach out to him because he will start looking, so. And I know that you might maybe want to wait until May if you would just want to.
Yeah, that's why I asked about the timing.
Communicate at least through an email with him.
Has any other board members had any feedback on that?
What age do they start getting their own Chromebooks? I don't even know.
So, we've got enough machines for everybody, but they actually start taking them home with them every night in seventh grade.
Seventh grade, okay.
Now, I will tell you, there's times fifth and sixth graders might check them out and take them home if they don't have their own machine at home. And then, not saying it can't happen with our kindergartners through fourth graders, but we give them a bag and their laptop to be responsible for starting in seventh grade.
Okay.
When we had COVID shutdowns, every student was able to take.
Yep, I remember that. So, then do they keep, do they keep that same one for like a few years and then we switch those out or how does that work?
Typically, that's what happens. The machine that they're issued, you know, starting in seventh grade, they're gonna have again in eighth grade. And then, when they go become a freshman, then keep that PC until they're done or until they're up for.
Until they're up for a new one, yeah, okay.
And something happens that it needs to be worked on. They just see Jeff and Curtis, they get a loaner and typically, as soon as it comes back, they give it right back to the student.
I'll just carry on.
I'll reach out to Curtis, though.
Sounds good. Second piece I had was facilities, study next steps and financial projections. So, I kind of made my own one-page summary based upon all the projects that were presented by FEH and tried to really give a, maybe a clearer perspective of the costs instead of just a total dollar amount. So, if you remember, the Buildings and Grounds Committee really prioritized these projects in groups of three. You know, the first was the safety concerns, immediate needs. The second one was kind of those intermediate projects that could be really broken down into phases. And then, the third is, needs further consideration. And that's where the maintenance building and the gym came in. Now, if we were to do all of those projects, you know, the low end would be eleven, a little over eleven million dollars. The high end would be just a little over fourteen million dollars, okay? But then, each project, kind of each category, I tried to kind of give you a number there as well. So, those are the projects that we talked about and the dollars associated with it. Since we've had our meeting, Jackie and I have met with Piper Jaffrey, which is Piper Sandler now. And that was a bigger kind of paperclipped report that I gave you guys. And I tried to just really summarize that kind of at the bottom. So, underneath the projects, if we're gonna move forward with any of these, obviously, cash is king. So, right now, between SAVE, PEPL, Pearl and our preschool dollars, we've got about one point one million dollars in cash. Our annual revenue that we're gonna generate from those funding streams is kind of in the middle. So, SAVE about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, PEPL three hundred and fifty, Pearl a little over forty-five thousand. And preschool, we carry over about ten thousand dollars a year, okay? That fluctuates more than the other three, okay? And then, our reoccurring expenses, if we're looking at SAVE, that's where two hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year is to pay back our bond that we did in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. And then, another hundred thousand dollars out of SAVE is really what we've budgeted for like roof expenses every year, all right? PEPL, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is our technology purchases on an annual basis and then really our vehicle purchases. So, we're rotating buses and Suburbans or vans or whatever on every other year rotation. So, roughly between those two, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Pearl, we budget twenty thousand dollars annually and then we've been saving so we can do a bigger project. Like in the past, we've resurfaced the track or we've done different things by saving Pearl over time, okay? So, reoccurring expenses between those is right around seven hundred thousand dollars. So, we're, you know, got about six hundred thousand dollars on an annual basis that we can use for the projects that are unforeseen or we're kind of saving as we go to do some bigger projects. And that's how we were able to do the bathrooms the last couple of years. And we've been able to upgrade the lighting and we've been able to do different things along the way, okay? So, cash in the bank, about one point one. Next year, we can estimate adding another six hundred thousand dollars to that. We're gonna have, we would estimate between one and a half to two million dollars in cash by this time, by the end of the fiscal year next year, which is gonna allow us to do some of the projects, but not all of them, not even all of them in that kind of safety kind of category one. So, if we want to move on a bigger project like the parking lot or like the bus barn, we're gonna need to consider either bonding against our PEPL or bonding against our SAVE to get some of these things done. So, I tried to rank the bottom four in really the, how quickly they could be done. So, if you wanted to bond against our current sixty-seven cent voted PEPL, we could, you know, next meeting, if we really wanted to, we could, you know, get a plan together and say, these are the projects we want to do. And the majority vote of the board, we could have two million dollars, okay? If we wanted to do SAVE, it takes a little bit longer because we need to have a public hearing. We need to publicize at least ten days to a maximum of twenty days ahead of that public hearing. Need to help hold the public hearing and then we need to have a fourteen-day comment period. So, if people want to give us comments, we gotta give them fourteen days. So, all in there, we're looking at at least a month before then we could come back to the next meeting. The board can simply take a majority vote like you did back in twenty fourteen. And there, you could get almost seven million dollars. Now, you don't have to do all seven million dollars, but you could, the capacity would get you about seven million. The next one, the voted PEPL, right now, we're asking voters for sixty-seven cents. The limit is up to a dollar thirty-four. So, we basically could double the voted PEPL, but it's called voted PEPL because we'd have to go out to the voters and ask them for sixty-seven more cents. So, not only would we double the annual revenue, but if you wanted to in the future bond against it, you're doubling the bond capacity of the voted PEPL as well. And we wouldn't have to go back out to the voters and say, this is what we want to do with it. You're just asking them for authorization based upon the purpose statement that we actually reauthorized back in November, okay? The last one, which, you know, it happens when you're typically expanding or adding classrooms, you're doing a really big project, is the general obligation bond. This hasn't been done here since ninety-eight when this building was constructed. But just like the voted PEPL, you need fifty percent plus one. And you can only do those in either November or March. You got two dates each year. So, I just wanted to kind of give everybody, put this back in front of everybody. I'm not asking that we're kind of making decisions tonight, but I think we need to consider what are the next steps? If we've said that these are kind of safety or immediate concerns, do we as a full board want to get back together and talk about, you know, these are the projects that we really want to get done? And these are the finance kind of opportunities that we want to pursue? Or do we want to kick it back to either the Buildings and Grounds Committee to reprioritize and say, we really need to get going on these? Or do we want to have the Finance Committee meet with Matt Gillespie from Piper Sandler and learn more about all the particulars? So, we did all that work. Buildings and Grounds Committee met multiple times over the last six months. I don't want to necessarily just put it on a shelf and let it collect dust. So, we can think about this. I can continue to kind of correspond with the different committees, but I, we're not necessarily gonna, there's a couple of these projects that we could get going on, some of the smaller projects that are under the hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar bid threshold, where we could move on like the auditorium stage floor, the middle school bridge. But anything above a hundred and thirty-two, we've got mandatory timelines for posting, for plans to be considered and then for the board to ultimately take action.
Is there even time at this point to get any of those projects done this summer?
Well, I think we can get, we could do the auditorium stage floor. We could probably get going on the middle school bridge. Those two projects, just because of their value, we could. The others.
I'm more concerned by finding a contractor.
Yeah, yep.
But, I mean, timing-wise, just, just based on that. A lot of them, we're, we're at April now. It'd be May before we'd be going out and, you know, getting a decision made by the board.
Yep.
Getting bidding and et cetera. It's, it's May at least before you do, you know, get that put out to bid. By that time, many of those contractors already have their summers booked, I would think.
Yeah, the middle school bridge is something that really can be done at any time. You know, the auditorium, I also worry about, you know, we've got heritage days in the auditorium in the summer. Not saying they can't use the gym or use some Forester building or something like that. But when we're doing a community space like that, you want to plan around it. You give people ample notice and stuff like that. But the, the middle school bridge, I think, whether it's done this summer or it's done next fall, we've got multiple access points. It's not a fire hazard. It's not a, a safety concern that we could get moving on that. And whether it happens towards the tail end of the summer or into the fall. I think any of those other projects, you know, it's, it's, we're probably looking at next summer at the earliest. You know, the bus barn, yeah, we probably could get something started again in the fall or early in the spring once the snow's melted and the ground's thawed. But the playgrounds obviously are gonna be used. We're gonna have kids on them. We're gonna want to plan for that in the summertime. Parking lot, in a similar situation, it's never a good time to do a parking lot, but it's also beginning to deteriorate and that's why it's in that first category. So, whether you do it in phases, even within the parking lot itself, where the staff lot's done first and then it's the student lot or... That's all part of that design and planning process. So, long-winded answer, I think the first two, if we wanted to get something started, we can. The other two, we really need to be maybe mindful of, we're gonna move on them next summer.
I think for efficiency purposes, it sounds like we might want to have a work session with the entire board rather than just having the committees come and then report back and then we have to separate again. What do you think?
Agreed with that.
Do you want me to reach out to Matt Gillespie from Piper to kind of go through that kind of packet that I gave you to kind of really dial in what those finances would be? Or you find what Jackie and I running through that?
I'll refer to the Finance Committee on that. I think we're pretty early in that process at this point. I mean, for you to do some more research on it and understand what is it taking, what is the timing, I think that's fine. I don't know, I mean, like I said, we're pretty early in this process to have, to get, to be at a point where we'd be concerned by going out and bonding for something. I think that we're, we're at least close to a year away from doing that probably next summer. Probably before we would do much with that, anybody else thinking anyway?
Yeah, I think, I just think, you know, whatever decision we're gonna make, we're gonna want to have the financing security ahead of the actual project letting and.
Sure.
Dialing in all that stuff. So, Matt is, he, he spent, what, forty minutes with the two of us, you know? He's happy to, you know, spend fifteen minutes just answering questions. He's happy to give an hour and a half presentation on all the details in there and dig into the weeds. But if that's something that we want to do at some point, it's an option. Whether that's maybe the Finance Committee that just does that component before a work session, that's an option, too.
If we get together as a board, I think we can, now that we've had some time to digest with what FEH presented, we can get together as a board and talk about what our priorities really are. And then, probably maybe even get down to what that financing amount might be. Then, we can take that next step rather than the other way around. Fortunately, we're in a position, the longer we wait in this rate environment, it's not gonna get any cheaper for the district tomorrow.
Okay?
So, maybe you want to send out like a?
A doodle.
A doodle, yes, thank you.
Next item in there, Dan Cruz put together just a really brief summary here of expenses and revenues when it comes to state basketball tournament. So, I think I had emailed everybody. We really estimated about thirty-two thousand dollars for expenses before we even left Rock Rapids. And that's where it came in at, quite honestly.
I gave you an updated report. Did you see that? Okay.
Yep. So, lodging between the two was right at eleven thousand dollars. Meals, if you add what's down below the Booster Club, sixty-two eighty, and the meals that the district paid for, forty-eight, twenty, is about eleven thousand dollars for, for meals. So, that all in is about thirty-two thousand dollars. Reimbursements from the athletic, the Boys Athletic Association was forty-two, thirty-eight and the girls was twenty-five, eighty-three. They have, they both have their own formula and their own reimbursement rates. Why they're not the same is a mystery to me and others. We did collect about two thousand dollars in donations from various individuals and companies. Like I mentioned before, sixty-two eighty Booster Club provided specifically for meals and then the other eleven hundred dollars on all the sales from the, just the state tournament, sweatshirts, t-shirts and apparel. So, about sixteen thousand, about half of that, we were able to, of our expenses, we were able to kind of recuperate. The other sixteen thousand dollars just comes from the activity fund. So, the gates over the course of the entire year, the fundraising that we've done throughout the course of the year really covers the, for me, sixteen thousand dollars.
That's just basketball.
That's just basketball. It wasn't wrestling, football in the fall.
Jazz choir.
None.
Lot of trial.
So. We're happy to pay the sixteen thousand dollars for two great weeks and two successful seasons, so. Lastly is, I think Jackie forwarded everybody the email from Lou after our meeting last week, our work session. And so, a couple of other things for us to kind of think about, you know, is how, how do we want to proceed? You know, she left us with some kind of hanging questions. And so, what I, I kind of think about this in some different levels. Do we just want to continue to embed the board's learning during our regular meetings? She left role-playing scenarios with Dave. You know, we just carve out ten minutes or twenty minutes to do that during our regular meeting, utilizing the series of questions that she gave us for when Jill and others come to talk to kind of be the basis for our dialogue during those presentations. Various times, Lou said she's willing to come back and. Various times Lou said she's willing to come back and continue to work with the board, whether that's one more time or we set up a series of, of continued trainings, and we, we have work sessions around those, you know? In addition to the local, kind of regional trainings that they have, I didn't list them all, and then the statewide convention in the fall every year. Or, do we just want to kind of hone in our calendar for the 2223 school year and think about, okay, these are the staff presentations, these are the work sessions, this is the learning that the board wants to do? Or, I think the, the other end of that extreme, if we think about just doing what we're currently doing, the other extreme is just saying two, we're going to meet two times a month. One's going to kind of be our business meeting, the other one's going to be for the learning and the presentations and the development of the board to create that culture of excellence and innovation. So, again, I don't, I'm not saying we need to solve any of these things tonight, but these are kind of the next steps when it comes to our development and learning as a
Does anyone want to share any feedback on the work session we had? Thoughts on if we want to do that? Once a year, one more time?
Is there a cost for her to come, or what's the, I mean, what's the financial?
It's like $2,000, I think, by the time it's all said and done.
Every time she comes?
Yep.
You pay annual dues, but it doesn't include that training actually?
The specialized training.
Obviously for her to travel and, yeah.
Whereas like, you know, when we signed up to go to the...
Yeah.
New member trainings, like 300...
90 bucks or something, wasn't it?
90 was the online, I think.
Oh, sure.
It was like $300, I think, for in-person.
Yeah.
So, it's cheaper, you know, based upon our numbers...
Right.
To do something that's personalized to us if we're bringing somebody here, than maybe all of us going to the same training at Sheldon. You know, it makes sense if it's one or two or, two or three of us maybe, but if we wanted to be all five members of the board, myself and Jackie and maybe the principals or teacher leaders, makes sense just to bring somebody here and really dial it into our
Would she, is it the same cost if she like met via Zoom or like didn't travel here?
Yeah, so I, I think it's about half of that $2,000 if she's doing it, she's facilitating.
Right, yeah.
We don't have to decide tonight.
Yeah, no, I was just curious if that's an option.
Certainly have had a busy year with all of the work sessions and stuff, which have been nice, and certainly want to continue that too, as part of the learning experience. Let us curculate on that.
You bet. That's why I just put them on there, is questions about next steps. I think right now, the, the big one is finding a date for us to dig into the next steps That's it for my report.
Move on to item six, Board Committees. Personnel Committee. Dave and I had a pretty busy month, meeting about the resignation, we're going to talk about in a little bit here, along with working on wage adjustments for next year and negotiations with CLEA and support staff. Talked about those a little bit more when we get there. Am I missing anything, Dave?
I think that's about it.
Sharing Committee, Scott, chat about that one?
Yeah, met with George, Board Members and Superintendent, and went over kind of the recap of the sporting year. Had a pretty good meeting. You guys are next for...
Yeah, I think the biggest conversation is, is girls wrestling's been sanctioned. And Dan has had a follow-up meeting with the girls' union, we now, he now has all the policies that was approved at their Iowa Girls Meeting here at first weekend, April last week. So now we need to get, I think, the, the wrestling coaches back together to meet, and then the Sharing Committee will get back together after that coaches meeting. Really bring a recommendation back to whether we're going to move forward with that or, you know, next steps if we're going to add that to the sharing agreement into the future. Otherwise, football, wrestling, cross-country were, you know, really went very smoothly and...
Are we going to host, or we asked GLR to host one more middle school football game at George?
Yep.
Try and save some wear and tear on our field, and they were receptive to that.
Yeah, just with the additional playoff games the last couple of years and anticipating continued success at that high school level, you know? Moving one more middle school game there just kind of protects the turf for postseason, hopefully.
Has a bit of expressed interest from our students on girls wrestling?
You know, we haven't polled the, the female student body at either school district until we really figured out what those rules and policies and how many weight classes and, you know, the big thing we're looking for is what's the beginning date of the season and what's the end date of the season? So that's, and confirmed it's going to be the start on the 1st of November, and the postseason will be done at the end of January. So, about two weeks before, two weeks before the boys' wrestling season starts and two weeks before the conclusion of the state boys' wrestling tournament. So there's, it's a, a narrow window if we've got girls that are running cross-country or playing volleyball in the fall to turn around and start wrestling, so. I think once we maybe made our decision about whether we're going to move forward with sharing is when we kind of begin that process of talking to our student bodies about participation.
Sure. One other thing about sharing too, that they say that they could just be, you know, our sharing may be right, just with George, but in other areas in the state, there's multiple schools coming together to get team put together for girls.
Yeah, there's, yeah. Because there's only going to be...
Depending upon the numbers.
Yep. There's only going to be one class this first year, so like, and boys have got 1A, 2A, 3A. First year is just going to be one class. There's not going to be any team, like dual tournament, really just an individual state tournament. And it's not going to matter if you're from Central Ion or Sioux City, we'll all be in the same class. And then, you know, this last year, they had about 1,300 girls at the unofficial state tournament. They're expecting to have around 2,000 next year, and as that continues to grow for participation is when they might add an additional class. And so, right now, there's no real disincentive for three, four, or five schools going together to try to get enough girls to practice and then, you know, compete. There would be a disincentive if and when they go to multiple classes, because then you're using the student population and you're either bumping up to that bigger class or you're staying competing at that state tournament for schools that are, might be smaller and closer to you and your enrollment.
Any other committee reports or board member reports? Okay, move on to item H, Old Business. Item number one, we have four policies listed there that are ready for their second reading since they are new policies.
Yep, so the, the summary again explains evaluator, administrator evaluation based upon the new Iowa standards for school leaders. We had added the other three. They were new policies, so that's why they're coming back for a second reading.
Entertain a motion to approve the second reading of those new policies when you're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of those.
Second. A motion and second to approve the second reading of the new policies as listed. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay, so item 2A is the resignation. Desai Cop, Assistant High School Volleyball Coach. So our last meeting, we actually placed that on the table, so before we talk about it again, I'd like a motion and a second to take that from the table so we can discuss it.
I'll motion to take that off the table.
Second. A motion, second, to take Des Cop's resignation off the table for discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Yeah, so, in the resignation letters in there, again, Dave and I met with Brent and Dan Cruz and Jason as part of the Personnel Committee and just talked it through a little bit more. Not a whole lot of new information maybe, but we did kind of receive that resignation on short notice as a board, which is really why we tabled it, to fully understand what was going on there, so that's what we did at the Personnel Committee level. I think there was some follow-up with each of you from Mr. George. Any questions or discussion? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to accept it when you're ready.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation from Des Cop from an old volleyball coaching position.
Second. A motion and second to accept the resignation from Des Cop as Assistant High School Volleyball Coach. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Moving on to item I, New Business. Item number one, consider approval of the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget.
It's before you, the, like I said, the summary that was listed in the front of your packet. We did have our hearing publication, all within the requirements of the law, and no public comments received at this time for a tax rate proposal of $11 and approximately 30 cents. And it needs to be filed by April 15th with the county, and I will do so if and when it's approved.
The 2022 in the middle column there, that's essentially reestimated for the rest of the fiscal year. Is that right, or reestablished?
We're, we're...
Right here, no?
Yes, so that's, that's basically, I take what I published last year and I'm trying to reestimate where it will land.
Yeah.
Yep.
Few months left.
Few months left, so that is, you know, this was two months ago that I did this, probably already not quite two months ago, and then that's why I'm asking that we'll probably have an amendment here for, to finish out the year. Again, just because of those factors that weren't included. And then the increases, sorry, and then in the increases, I did include some of your capital improvements that might come into play in 2223. You'll see that in line 33. That plus might not happen, but at least we're budgeting for them. If we're going to go bigger than that, then we're going to have to amend.
It's easier to budget for not spend it than to the opposite.
Correct.
You have to go back and amend if you spend over that amount.
Correct, and if we end up doing, you know, bigger projects, then I'm going to have to amend anyway, but at least, because amendment is only on expenses, not on revenues, so that's kind of where we end up. Is our Activity Fund, for instance, might end up okay as far as balance-wise, but our expenditures have been higher than what has been predicted, so that's why we amend. Other than that, any other questions? And again, the budget that I'm asking for approval on is simply an authority to tax. The budget itself is what we determine as a board and as a district, and my notes, amend and hold that in soul.
It's basically a result of all the decisions we would make throughout the year.
Correct. Yep. This just gives us the half, three-quarters of the funding, you know, via property tax, and the rest comes via state aid and other sources.
Entertain a motion to approve the budget for next year when you're ready.
Make a motion to approve the budget for next year.
I'll second.
A motion and second to approve the budget for fiscal year 2020, 2022, 2023. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number two, consider the last day of school year for students and staff.
Page 37, kind of has a review of what I reported on last month. My recommendation is, continues to be Friday, the 27th as the students' last day, and then Thursday, June 2nd as staff members' last day. Try to chronicle, you know, all those hours. The bottom there, the trainings that we're going to be providing for staff on the 31st, 1st, and 2nd include kind of the ACEs training, kind of adverse childhood experiences training, kind of mental health training. We've got to do it over two days simply because of the number of trainers available from the AEA. We've got to split our staff in half, because we're going to train not only our 67 teachers, but also any of our support staff members that want to participate on that. So we could have 120 people, you know? And so, if you're not in the adverse childhood experiences training, we're going to certify everybody in CPR, and then some of the annual trainings that we do at the beginning of the year, we're going to do now at the end of the year. So any new staff members coming onboard would have to do that, and we'll have those identified for them, and then also give some choice for individual activities as well, based around the goals that they either are planning for next year to kind of get a jump start on, or wrapping any of their current goals, or whether they're individual or their team-based goals wrapped up for this year. And then the very last day, we've solidified a trainer for character strong training. It's kind of like a social, emotional, mental health kind of training for staff, but also how we're going to utilize those resources with kids for next year, for those elementary staff members, and we're trying to nail down a similar type of presenter for middle school and high school staff. Kind of, again, kickstart our work around restorative practices for next year, or bringing in Jimmy Kossis, the author of that Culturize book that the 7th or 12th grade staff have been studying all year round. So, in the negotiations process with both of those groups right now. And then, obviously, some checkout items for each staff member that they're going to take care of on the, on that last day.
Is the restorative practice thing something they do in the lower, in the elementary, middle school too, or just high school, is that? I mean, obviously, it's not on this training day, but...
Yep, so the, there's been a secondary group that's been a leadership team, really, that's been doing the restorative practices. I think like PBIS work for elementary.
Yeah.
Restorative practices, a similar type of kind of process, but for secondary, older students.
So if you recall, last month, we kind of gave Mr. George the guidance that we wanted to have the, the last day of school for students be May 27th, and then the final day for teachers June 2nd, and then I'd asked him to bring it back for formal, because it's a major calendar change, so that's why we have it on the agenda there. So if you're ready?
And thank you for formalizing this with the teachers. Yep. Go through this section, otherwise I can imagine some of the feedback we'd get if it wasn't, wasn't specified as to what they would be doing.
I'll make a motion to approve the last day of school for, for the 27th of May.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second to adjust the calendar so that the last day of school for students will be Friday, May 27th, and the final day for teachers will be Thursday, June 2nd. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number three, consider the settlement with CLEA. Mr. George?
Yeah, so the... Yeah, so the, first and foremost, want to thank Andy and Dave. And then also from the CLEA's negotiations team, Chris Wright, Mike Groan and Ben Docker. Had a series of four different meetings over the course of March. Actually, I think we started in February. But thank both teams for the productive dialogue and the proposal that's in front of you. 3.53% increase for teachers, which equals $2,000 pay raise per teacher. You can see the ongoing cost to the general fund is about $150,000. And then a one-time retention payment for a maximum of $1,000 per staff member. But it would be paid based upon your returning to work for Central Lion next year. And then if you were with us all the way back when the pandemic had started in 2019, 2020, you could get $1,000. If you started with us just this year and you come back to us next year, it'd just be $500. So it's not every staff, every teacher will get $1,000, but our estimate is about $60,000 in one time and that would come from SIR, the SIR funds. So total package, total dollars is 210, 422. CLEA's met and ratified.
How come we decided to do the one-time retention payment for teachers, but we didn't? Two retention payments for?
Teachers got it through the governor.
So the teachers had.
In March.
Governors.
All they got.
That was paid back in March. Yep, so that's why the support staff is trying to do a similar type of.
Good, thank you.
One-time payment, two times.
Yeah, I appreciate the transparency we have with the CLEA during those meetings. Scott, I know you've experienced it too. Everybody's just honest with each other in the situation we're at. So that's much appreciated in these times because I know there are others that aren't fortunate enough to have that kind of relationship between a board and their union. So I appreciate that. Any other questions on that? Entertain a motion to approve that when you're ready.
Make a motion to approve the agreement with CLEA.
Second. A motion and second to approve the agreement with CLEA is stated and is recommended. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number four, consider approval of support staff wages. Mr. George, I do.
Yep, so same percentage increase at 3.53% for hourly staff. But the difference here is a wage adjustment adjusting any staff member that might be below. If you're in food service or custodial, 1350. Right now, our starting in those two areas is 1075. So even after the three and a half percent increase, raising those to that new minimum of 1350. In the para educator kind of learner assistant category, anybody below $14 would go to 14. Right now, it's $11 starting wage in our para pool. And then bus drivers, we're at $28 this year for bus drivers per hour. If you remember, I talked about, we're now basically like Kyler's filling in in the morning. So Kyler's spending an hour and a half. So he's getting, every time he goes on a trip, he's getting $42. You know, if he does it in the morning, if he does it both morning and afternoon, it'd be $84. So that's what the bus drivers are gonna be going for. So those are kind of the wage adjustments. And then as Scott kind of pointed out, retain to one-time retention payments. So this April paid period, they would, all staff members that are currently employed with us would get up to $500. If you're part-time, it'd be 250 on a prorated basis. We have some staff members that are four days a week because they work in a preschool classroom. So it'd be prorated for those folks. But then, just like I kind of explained for teachers, in the fall, we would do another one-time payment based upon your years of service and whether you return to us next fall for a maximum of 500 more dollars. So again, total package settlement, my numbers were, didn't add up. So the total, whether it's reoccurring or one-time retention payments is 122, 554. So ongoing reoccurring costs for the three and a half percent wage increase and those adjustments moving staff members to those new minimums is 81, 754. And then the estimated retention between both this spring's and next fall's is another $40,000.
Just a little bit more on the wage adjustment. So Mr. George brought us a couple of things where that's a comparisons of our support staff wages versus surrounding districts. And then obviously we're in competition with some other businesses in the local area for those folks. So that's where we thought it was important to get that wage adjustment up there where we can remain competitive to keep those folks along with the retention bonus as well.
Right. Yeah. Wage adjustment to both retain as well as attract any new people. It's just becoming more and more difficult to attract and retain good employees especially. So we really need to, through the work that Mr. George did, mainly it was, we need to increase our wages and that's a very significant increase percentage wise. So that, we thought that's what we needed to be competitive.
So I think that as we consider this here, the only group we have left is the leadership group. We'll be working on that in time for next month.
Yep.
Any questions on that? Discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the support staff wage increase.
Second. Okay, have a motion and second to approve the support staff wages as recommended and as noted. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number five, consider similar quote for web hosting, meeting documents and policies for $4,950 for the next fiscal year.
Yeah, so a couple of months ago, I've reported, you know, assembly and moving our, kind of our meeting agenda and all of our packet information online. And also it kind of alluded to those, what is it, five other. Modules, I guess is what they're calling them, available. I really think we can start with meetings and policies. And if there's, if we like how that really works and maybe consider the evaluations module and maybe even the planning module. So not all of their offerings, but just meetings and policies, about another $5,000. Listed again, there's about half the conference, fifty, you know, five schools right now are already using this. It would be the sixth, so.
I know we talked about this before, but how is this different? I mean, I know we get our agenda and stuff that goes online or meetings.
Yep.
How's this different than what we're doing like with PEA?
So again, we can still print our packets like we're printing them right now, but it's really, it's a workflow thing for Jackie and I. And the principals or anybody that might be submitting a report, they can upload their reports right to the program instead of.
All of this stuff would be able to be on it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't know if that was like under documents or something like it, if we're gonna still have.
Yep, so the meetings would be all of, all of our packet materials would be available online. And then it kind of, so Jackie on a, like last Friday afternoon, sitting in front of the copy machine, making copies, scanning it, posting it to the web, things like that. One click of the button. Once we've, either I've compiled it or she's compiled it and then it's automatically emailed to you guys so you have access. And then any of our, you know, the newspaper and staff members get an email with all that. So policy on the policy side, similar. You know, right now, yeah, we post all of our policies on the website. But this has an archive feature. So any of the new policies that we've revised or updated, not only is that publicly viewable, but it's a one-stop shop. If we want to look back and this is the way policy was written three years ago before we updated it. There's always a ongoing file. Right now, Amanda's managing all that stuff on the policy side of things. I think it just streamlines that workflow. It's really what we're trying to create more efficiency and 24/7 access for anybody.
The way I looked at it is certainly gonna be some change for how we do things as a board and we'll see what that looks like over the course of the year. It is just a one-year agreement, so if we get through it and we don't like it, we can go back to the old way. But more importantly, I think, you know, we ask our students to embrace technology and I think it's important that the board kind of go along with them on that journey. This is one way for us to kind of dip our toes in the water, if you want. Can we add any of these other modules to it?
Anytime.
First year.
Yeah, anytime. If we get into this and we really like how it works. If we wanted to add the evaluations module between now and December, which is when we've done my mid-year review, you know, all that kind of sharing of information could be done through the same system. And again, all the new leadership standards would be embedded in that. My reflections would be embedded in that. You guys can make comments on that electronically. So there's, I mean, there's a lot of additional features to it if we want to go down it, but I think makes most sense to start with meetings and policies and see how it works. If it's too cumbersome on our end and it's too confusing on your guys' on the user's side of things, then you know, you can go back to what you've been doing at any point.
Well, board members have to have a computer here for you something.
Right.
To access it. Yeah, I mean, like Carrie or some, I mean, someone that doesn't usually bring a.
If they, again, if they're not ready to embrace that, then we can obviously print just where we already have.
And we got, you know, talking to Curtis, we've got iPads. If anybody wants an iPad, if anybody wants a Chromebook or a laptop, we can check those out just like we would to kids.
Any other thoughts, questions? Entertain a motion to approve if you're ready.
Make motion to approve the assembly quote for web hosting, et cetera.
I'll second.
A motion and second to approve the assembly quote for $4,950 for next fiscal year. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number six, consider Flooring America quote for $11,000 and change for carpeting and supplies.
So Steve Breck, you got this, you can see his email Friday morning anticipating an increase in carpet costs. So we wanted to try to get in, lock in the quote as it, as it sits right now. But the page 45, we kind of, Steve and I, a year and a half ago, walked around and kind of made a plan. And we did the top four classrooms this last summer and it'd be these other four classrooms at the bottom for this summer. So this is what the carpet would ultimately be used for. It tells me these would, these four would be, all of the kind of 98 classrooms would be with the carpet tiles instead of the, just the big rolls. Still have the big rolls in the media center, in the band room, in the choir room. But he's really liked the carpet tile. You know, you have a spill or you have a rip, you can just pull that one tile up and put the new one down. So they've been really durable, so.
Who's doing the install for us?
The plan would be Terry Van Burcom. He's been doing the carpet for, since before he even retired, I think.
Questions on that? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the quote from Flooring America as listed. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number seven, consider resolution for Lion County Riverboat Foundation grant for $1,300 for aquaponics system.
So Mr. Pletzky's written a mini grant for the Riverboat Foundation Aquaponics System. The Riverboat requires a resolution to be a part of the official grant. So that's why we're asking for that motion tonight.
One comment on item number one, the resolution, I think we're missing O, aquaponics.
Just took it straight off of his grant. Next page, so that's how I did it.
You're right. We'll make sure he gets it updated for him.
I think his grant is already submitted, so I'll send it to him. Make the suggestion.
The eyes across the face.
Yep.
So what do you need from us? Just a motion, do you need a miracle?
I need a miracle.
Okay, so entertain a motion and second when you're ready. Motion to approve.
Second.
Janz?
Aye.
Osma?
Aye.
Har?
Aye.
Boo?
Aye.
Good luck, Mr. Pete. Item number eight, consider policy review. So consider first reading of new policies, 7-Eleven, Foot 1-0, school bus passenger restraints.
So the new bus that was just delivered is our first bus with seat belts. And so every new bus that's purchased needs to have them going forward. So that law was passed in 2019. This is our first bus that has them. So this is a mandatory policy once you do have a bus equipped with seat belts. So that's where my recommendation says we consider the first reading and waive the second because it is mandatory. Like Jackie alluded to, it's here, but now we're waiting for it to be officially licensed. So once we get all that from the state, then we can actually begin to use it. We will be communicating, this bus will be the new Dune Route bus. So we'll be communicating about the expectation that students wear a seatbelt while riding to and from school. And again, like the policy reads, any adult that rides that, and we do have a pair that rides that every night, would also be required to wear a seatbelt. And that's just gonna be the norm going forward. So our plan, as we start to face these, and we'll start with all of our route buses because those are the ones that have the most kids. And then as we get all of our routes with seat belts, then we'll start with the activity buses.
How do drivers like enforce, I mean?
Yeah, so it's, again, it's communication.
I'm just saying like.
About as well as they enforce all the other programs.
I mean, if something were to happen and a kid's not buckled, like you can't. I mean, if something were to happen and a kid's not buckled, like, you can't get in trouble, can you? I mean, that's hard to...
Yeah, so I don't anticipate...
Police, you've got one driver and how many kids?
That's why it's good that we're starting with the bus route that has the second adult on it. But much like we have anytime we have an issue with any student behavior on a bus, we have a three strikes and you're out type of policy. Strike one is the reminder from the bus driver. Strike two is a conversation with the principal, most oftentimes Mr. Harmon. And strike three might be a day or two where mom and dad have to bring you to school.
Yep.
You can't ride the bus. So that same type of three strikes policy is how we would try to enforce the seatbelts. The nice thing is, most of our kids are so used to wearing seatbelts, unlike us when we were growing up. It wasn't really, you know, the mainstream for you to wear your seatbelt if you were in the backseat and stuff like that. My kids would just get in and put their belt on and don't think twice about it. So that's our hope. We won't have the problems with enforcement.
Do we anticipate that going into service before the end of the, end of the school year?
Yeah, so when we did the activity, when we got the new white activity bus, it was about, what, 10 days? And we had it fully licensed, had the plates back and...
Waiting on the DOT.
Yep, so our hope is to be able to use it before the end of this year.
So are we communicating that to the parents as well?
Yep, so after you guys were, hopefully approved this, email will go to those families on that Dune Route. And then a physical letter will go in the mail to them as well.
Good idea.
Yep.
I get to visit the bus.
The nice thing too is Lane Menning drives the Dune Route. So we've got Mr. Harmon and Lane, kind of the two heavies when it comes to that. Set the standard.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading and waive the second reading of the passenger restraint policy.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the first reading of the new policy for the school bus passenger restraints and waive the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item nine, personnel with resignations and hirings listed, is anyone opposed to taking all of those together? Okay, we'll do that. Mr. George, want to run us through those?
Yeah, so Claire Strike Kuma actually turned her resignation in, as you saw there, March 25th. Her last day was last Friday. And then Jill and Amy are going to see prom through this spring. But their resignation would be effective at the end of the school year. So we need to advertise and recruit somebody for that role. And then Reed Gertis, it's actually George Lowrock employee, but has been an assistant football coach for three, four years.
It's been a while.
Reed's just, he's got a growing family and he also coaches, is the head girls' basketball coach at GLR. So he's just looking to step away. Zachary Collins interviewed by Mr. Harmon, Ms. Rangelman, Mr. Langholt. Four really good candidates for a middle school band position. Excited that he's accepted. And then since you approved the contract settlement, these are the lists. The last is the list of all of our teaching staff and our extra duty contracts.
I'm assuming those will be updated by changes that occur in coaching.
Yep, so based upon our resignation for DES COP, that will come up. And then I also think we had on here Jill.
Reed Gertis is on there.
And Reed, yep.
Yeah, I don't have any of that updated until after tonight, yep. And then I only have just the open assistant baseball, so far.
Yep.
Tonight.
Questions are covered, some of those?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel, things as listed. Items as listed. What were we going to say?
Second, a motion and second to approve the resignations and hirings as listed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Letter J, announcements, dates to remember.
Yeah, just a couple to highlight. Obviously this Friday and next Monday, a week from tonight, is our spring break for Good Friday and kind of Easter holiday. Prom, like we alluded to, is a week from this Friday, so it's just right around the corner. We've got spring concerts for kindergarten, second grade, fourth grade. We already mentioned the visit day for our preschool TK kindergarten students. Teacher appreciation week is coming up, the first week in May. Also, May is school board appreciation month, so a lot of recognition in the month of May. We obviously had our home high school track meet tonight, but our home middle school track meets on the third. Otherwise, our next meeting's on the ninth of May. We do have golf and track on that night. May is a busy month. You can see the following, Monday is our first baseball game. The Wednesdays in May are also, we have activities scheduled because our church night activities end here in April. So whether it's the high school concert that first Wednesday, just becomes more and more difficult if we're going to look for a new date. But I tried to put the rest of, of our May dates, especially because of graduation. So graduation week activities begin on Sunday, May 15th with baccalaureate. That's an optional activity for kids and families, but we host it here in the auditorium. And then Wednesday, May 18th is seniors' last day, but that's the awards program in the morning. Then they have rehearsal after the awards program's over. And then commencement is on Sunday, the 22nd. I know I'm going to send a doodle about a work session. You know, Andy and I had also talked about kind of my end-of-year evaluation, whether we do that in May or we add it as a, its own separate work session or whatever.
Yeah, I think we, earlier in the year, we had ballparked that as late, late April, early May. Do we remember traditionally how long the agenda is in May? I guess I can pull mine up here from last year. Yeah, it was pretty healthy.
So we know we're going to have the kind of leadership team administrative salaries. Probably those shared positions, again, transportation, human resources.
It's, I'm going to say the agenda items aren't usually, it's the reports. So those you can kind of pick and choose to...
Some board's thought on that. Do we, do we risk going into a longer meeting and then sticking around for Brent's agenda? Or do we just prefer to schedule it separately? Considering that we are going to have another work session out there for our potential projects and associated funding. I guess my preference is to maybe do it separately, just so we have some energy to get through it.
I prefer to do it separately. Is it, is there a way we can do that work session and then his evaluation? Or would that get too late if we did both?
We'd like, we meant at 5:30 for the last work session, we could always start that work session earlier too.
And just limit our time.
I don't know how long that usually goes, so I'm just...
It ranges, you know, it depends on...
Depends.
Yeah.
Maybe we could limit our time to, to the first item. And if we don't get where we need to be, always come back the next month too. Should we try and do them all in one, is that okay?
So I'll just send the doodle out, kind of starting at 5:30.
The board meeting separately and then a work session for both of those, you're saying?
Yeah.
We'll have the work session prior to the next board meeting.
Sounds like a plan.
Are we good with the board meeting that date? Will that be hard for Kerry again with track that night?
Yep. Yeah. It's kind of one of those things where you kind of just have to pick a date and...
Yep.
Because you can see, like, you know, typically we either move it up a Monday or back a Monday or on a Wednesday. And our Mondays are busy and our Wednesdays are busy. So I don't know if we're going to avoid everything. You know, if we went to the following Monday, the Monday after on the 16th, you know, it's high school baseball.
Anything later than that, then I know that Carrie and I would both probably get a little cranky just because it's graduation.
Oh, yeah. I didn't know about like the Monday before or even like that next day, the Tuesday or a different night, but it's fine. I don't care. I just didn't know if she'd want to be here.
Tuesday's a middle school, we track, we have virtually golf.
Golf's probably not an issue, but I don't know about the track meetings.
Just moving the time up, if she's not here, moving the time up, would that help her out at all?
For a track meet, I don't think moving the time up really helps. Because they start at 4:30, the running events start at, I think, 5:15, 5:30.
So she'll be busy.
I was going to say, unfortunately, May is just going to be one per month that might not work. Your work session might be another issue.
Leave it as the ninth for now?
I'm saying whatever we determine, I have to keep if I'm going to do my publication. So we need to be pretty solid in what we determine by...
For the revision of the budget.
When do you have to know that by?
The, I have to have it to the paper next week, Friday, for the 27th publication.
Between 10 and 20 days before the meeting.
And that would work for either the ninth or the 16th. It actually falls perfectly, so could switch it to the 16th. I don't know who's affected by high school baseball. So maybe the 16th is a better option.
I'm open on the 16th. Yeah, I'm good on the 16th. I'm open for either day.
16th?
There you go, yep, 16th. Anything else on the calendar? It's 9:03, it's a low one. Why does I entertain a motion to adjourn? I'll do adjourn. Is that it? Motion second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, we are adjourned.
I have a question, this is not forwarded by... I'm just curious, like the ISAC stand? Do they understand or do we get...
Well, this year we have results. And we'll get them here in a couple of weeks, what, this year, what we just touched?
Sure.
But they're not standing on it, so they're just...
Okay, I'm sorry.
They're not parading.